This conference will now be recorded.
The regular town council meeting for the town of Surfside Beach, Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. I would like to invite Jamie Lambert from Discover Church to do our invitation.
Mr. Power, here's a prayer. Heavenly Father, we love and honor you. Let me start off by saying thank you. We have all of your together here today. Thank you for your blessings and the grace that you have shown us. Thank you for the ability of this town council to be involved in useful work for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. For I pray for the mayor and the various levels of town officials, in particular this assembled council. I'm asking you graciously grant them wisdom to govern even in the face of conflict and the issues of the town, a sense of the welfare and true needs of people of the town, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today and that your hand be in every decision. Please give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around the town of Surfside. We ask this in the light name of Jesus. Amen.
Another pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number three, basements relating to the agenda. All right, I hear enough, so I'm going to move on to number four. Minutes approval, and I'll take both of these at the same time. I'd like to have a motion for approval of the April 8th, 2024 budget retreat and the April 9th, 2024 regular town council meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stamen. I make a motion if we accept April 8th, 2024 for budget retreat and April 9th of the regular town council meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to public comments, and these are comments related to agenda items only. Five minutes per speaker. Do you have any comments?
I try not to lose my jewelry this time. Anne Westcott, fifth and Sealer North. I've been thinking about all of the comments that were made on Monday, and that's not usually a good thing. Anyway, our town is pretty much built out. There are very few lots left to be built on, and most of the construction I see are people doing additions, remodeling, et cetera. So we pretty much know what our needs are, and probably our town needs aren't going to change that much in 10 years. Ori County is growing by weeks and bounds, and most of the new development is lot line houses and high density housing. Who knows how much infrastructure Ori County is going to need as a result of this? We are an incorporated town. We're doing just fine the way we are. True, we have some problems with staffing, but that can be easily handled. I have to wonder, what do we have to gain from this and how much do we have to lose? I just don't really understand the math. So just something to think about.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Melody, I'm the day we have 15, 10 seats to drive. First, I want to just say that I really appreciate that all of you are willing to sit in those seats. I don't want to, so I'm very thankful that you're willing to. And I know that you're not given easy tasks and that the decisions are not always easy. But I do want to say that our household is very against turning the fire department over to the county for many, many, many reasons. But we, just to keep it short, we are against that. And I hope, sincerely hope, that you will put as much work and as much effort into keeping our fire department here as you are willing to put forward turning it over to the county. I think there are so many far-reaching unintended consequences that we can't even imagine right now. And I just hope that you will really... I also think that a lot of people in our town don't really even understand that this is going on, that it is even being discussed. And I think before you make any kind of decision like that, you need to make a very strong, very concerted effort to get this information out to people so that they will know that this decision is being made. You know, we have newsletters, we have all kinds of things that go out. I know that Tabitha sends out, you know, an email newsletter. We can put it every... It needs to be everywhere. And I know it's hard when everybody comes in and you get bombarded, but you might get some positive comments, too. I don't know. But, you know, all I want is for people to really know what's going on and make decisions for themselves as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Richard Weaver, 618 Cypress on the South Side Skid Row. Like Melody said, I do appreciate the position that y'all choose to feel to be able to be of service for the community. I don't want to do that either. I am a small business owner. Been out for 40 years, and I know that the best customer you can ever have is ones you educate so that they would know everything about what's going on. I think that it would be wise to be able to get as many people educated on what the needs are and then figure out what the solution is. At this point in time, not knowing anymore than what I do, I also am against turning it over to the county because of what the unknowns are. But again, once the information and the research is done and everything's figured out, then that would be the time to make the right decision. I just appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on now to communications. And item 6A is proclamation, 24-141 Lupus Awareness Proclamation. Whereas lupus is an autoimmune disease that can cause severe damage to the tissue and organs in the body and in some cases death, and whereas it is estimated that at least 1.5 million Americans and 5 million people worldwide suffer from a form of lupus, and whereas more than 16,000 new cases of this disease are reported across the country each year, and whereas while lupus strikes mostly women of childbearing age, men, children, and teenagers also develop this disease, and whereas the most common symptoms of lupus, including extreme fatigue, headaches, painful or swollen joints, anemia, and hair loss, can mimic numerous other diseases, and the lack of awareness of the symptoms and health effects of lupus leave many people to suffer several years before obtaining a correct diagnosis and medical treatment. Now therefore I, Robert Kraus, mayor of the town of Surfside Beach, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Lupus Awareness Month and May 10th, 2024 as Lupus Awareness Day throughout the state and encourage all South Carolinians to work together to raise awareness of the need for continued research into the causes of and the cure for this chronic debilitating disease and to offer support to the individuals and families it affects. And our next item is proclamation, 24-142 Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. This is the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 5th, 5 to 11, 2024. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk, now therefore I, Robert Kraus, mayor of Surfside Beach, do recognize the week of May 5th through 11, 2024 as the Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Sherri Medina, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, dated this 23rd day of April, 2024. Thank you, Ms. Medina. All right. I'm going to take a break from talking now. Item 6C is the Myrtle Beach Chamber of Commerce presentation. I'm going to let Ms. Karen Rea produce the talking.
I'm not going to talk as much as usual with this spring cold, so spare you. But thank you for having me this evening. Important that I share with you, first thing I want to make sure you're aware of is that because of the lag of data, this has been there for October through December of 2023. You know, I'm sending it to you people, and so hopefully you are a quarter behind. This is October through December 2023 accountability, specifically the ATAX that we received from you and various checks over the course of the year. And what you see here is invested is $219,296.56. To the right of that, the chart indicates what different marketing activities we invested that $219,000 in. So you see, social media and search was a very large percentage, 36%. Also, digital advertising, which includes a lot of the video that we now do, 50% of the budget, 7% in television, some in out-of-home advertising and print, and then a little bit in destination PR as well as research. So again, a smattering of different marketing tools that we use at different times of the year in order to get our messages across to the marketplace. This is the full year accountability, this next slide. So don't want to confuse folks, but we were able to pull together the January through December 2023. So not your fiscal year, but the calendar year of 2023. And you see that we had a carryover from 2022, where we had put some monies aside for peer, and we ended up carrying that over and spending that. So the total for the entire year was $443.78. So again, go back, $219 spent in a quarter, but the entire year, all four quarters, was $443.78. And similar profile, where you see us investing heavily on your behalf in digital, in social and search media, television, 10% here over the course of the year, as well as out-of-the-door, which is, you know, billboards and some print advertising, although over the last couple of years, the print has declined as it's become less effective for us. So those are the dollars invested for full year. And again, all of this is a reporting that goes to your finance department, and our chief marketing accountability person, Mary, calculates all of this. She sends this to you. She also sends it to the state of South Carolina, so it's on record. It's also always displayed on the Myrtle Beach Area Chamber website for citizens to be able to take a look at. So this is something we thought would be of interest for you to see, just ATAX collections over the last several years. So pre-pandemic 2019, the total collected was $709,000, which was, again, a very good year, 2019. 30% of that came to the Chamber and CBB to market. Then you see the dip in 2020, not surprising. What's kind of surprising is that it says little of dip as it actually is, negative 6.2%, given that horrific year. But then look at 2021, look at the rebound, this complete what we call revenge travel happening, and it shot up to $894,000 collected. 2022 surpassed 2021 with over $1 million for the first time ever in the history of Surfside Beach with those kind of ATAX collections. And then 2023, $1,174. So you see we're getting some really, really healthy growth. We were just discussing, though, the 2024's forecast, which we do with an outside company called Tourism Economics. They're a division of Oxford Economics. They help us do a forecast per quarter and for the year. They are predicting that this year is going to be tougher. There's going to be almost no growth, and we actually have seen that already in this Q1 calendar year, January through March, in talking to our hoteliers, talking to our restaurants. In retail, it's been soft as predicted. We started to see that swing up as Easter hit on March 31st, and April has been much better. So we do expect a strong Q2 and a very strong Q3, our summer peak season, and we have a lot of looks for Q4. So we think we're going to end up, again, having a very strong year that will be similar to 2023, but we started out of the gates slower. A lot of that has to do with just inflationary pressures. People are absolutely making this pocketbook decisions about, maybe they're still coming, but they may not come for a whole week. They may decide only come for four nights instead of seven nights, or they may not eat out every night. So they're making different decisions about, again, how many attractions they want to go to. Because as you know, if you've got a couple of kids and you take them to attraction every day, it starts to weigh the item. So we're seeing those kinds of behavioral changes with our consumers, but the good news is they're still coming, and they still want to come. The other thing that's really important for y'all to think about and love to have further conversations with the council about this, but you have the holdback. So the way the state law is written, instantly there's 5% that is held back in a kitty that is for you at your discretion to decide what kinds of advertising programs you would like to do. We've been talking about the holdback specifically for peer promotion, but one of the things we've really seen is we've been able to announce the peer and do special overlays of peer advertising within that, say, $219,000 that we spent last quarter, and we really didn't need to use any of this holdback. So the way this works is it does have to be for marketing. That is something that everyone gets a little upset about because they like to use it for like a festival or for operations, or to pay for, you know, a promoter, or to actually pay for bands. It cannot be used for that. It has to be used to reach tourists 50 miles away from Surfside Beach. But we could still be promoting a festival, and of course, we have more and more festivals happening here now. So lots of opportunities there, and the mechanism is very easy. I just need a simple one-sentence letter from the mayor saying, "Dear Karen of Myrtle Beach Area Chamber, you know, the town council has decided we would like to spend $30,000 of our holdback money on XYZ project." And then those monies get released to your finance department. And then we work with you, since we are your destination marketing organization, to put a plan together for how you use those $30,000. So we would still place all of that for you and do that. We're not just sending you a check and then leaving you to your own devices. So excuse me, want to assure you of that. So again, this pot has grown very nicely over the last couple of years, and right now, the forecast is that another $17,000 will be added to that by the end of this year. So you'll have just shy of $125,000. And again, I think you've been very conservative. You don't want to just spend it for the sake of spending it. But if there is something important that you really feel like this would be a great opportunity to bring more tourists to Surfside Beach, we should definitely talk about what that might be. As I mentioned, even though Q1 has been soft, you should feel really, really great about this stat. We certainly do. This was done by TripAdvisor and their data, and it showed that for 2023, Myrtle Beach and Grand Strand was the fourth top US domestic destination in terms of clicks to book. Not just looking, but clicks to book. And I have to draw your attention to the three that are above us. Las Vegas, New York City, and Orlando are not our competitive set by any stretch of the imagination. So again, a testament to our marketing team that they've been working so hard. And you'll also note that we're the only in that top four, we're the only really coastal, you know, destination. You've got Honolulu right underneath us in certain Key West, but really, really proud of the fact that people, again, have desire to learn more about our area and they aren't clipping. And these are, again, domestic US travelers. Look at that. One of the other things we do to hold ourselves accountable is we hire Longwoods International every year. They do a specific study for us that says for every $1 that we invest through Visit Myrtle Beach into advertising and marketing promotion, how much return on investment are we getting for that? And what they've calculated using this calculator that they do use for Las Vegas and Orlando and many other destinations is that every $1 invested returns $167 of direct visitor spending. So that tells us we're doing a very good job of generating a lot of revenue. And then the part that our friends in Columbia really like, and you should like at the local level, is that additional $22 of that is local tax revenue that is being generated from that $1 invested. So again, we were told last year by Longwoods when they completed this, that there was only one other city in the US that had a better return on investment that was close to 200 to 1 ROI, and that was Las Vegas, Nevada. And you can kind of put two and two together. People bring a lot of money to Las Vegas. They don't necessarily come home with most of that money. But I think that ours is really great because it's not tied up in casinos or gambling. It's tied up in our small businesses, there are restaurants, our retail attractions, in our hotels. So we're happy with that, and we will be doing this again this year to continue to see how well we're performing. So this is based on the forecast that Tourism Economics did and what I showed you a little bit earlier. This is the proposed budget for this year that we would, again, invest $325,825. I'm going to go back a few slides just to refresh your memory that the amount that we are projecting is $1,176, so technically 30% of that would be $345,000. But we've lowered the budget just to be conservative again. And again, the plan right now is to invest just about $325,000. What we're able to do is, since our marketing program's so flexible and we're buying things by the quarter, if for some reason we need to slow something up, take something out, redo something, put more money in TV, less in social, we have a lot of flexibility with our ad agencies to literally make marketing changes within a day if we see a trend and we think that things want to change. So you see, we're just putting a little tiny bit of money into air service, although MYR is continuing to do really well. Just announced some additional flights that are with Breeze Airlines, which is doing very well. So they've just announced three more cities. And we continue to work with Avelo and some of these other newer airlines that have come on the scene that are bringing more service to some of those Northeast and Midwest cities that want to come here to the Grand Strand but have not had direct access before. But that's just, you know, again, $5,000. As you can see, the bulk of the dollars that we plan to invest are in publicity, then in digital advertising, general consumer promotions. So this might be a promotion that we do with the sports company. We've been doing some interesting things with Neutrogena, the sun skincare brand, to do joint promotions with them. We continue to do promotions with the Entenmanns, Mini Buffets, and Target Moms. That's a very popular promotion, so we continue to do some things like that. We do have a lot of group business, which I don't talk to you a lot about, but that's essentially our military groups, our fraternal groups, our conferences, our conventions that come to the convention center, and the big one of all those is sports. And so we do spend some money marketing out to those groups, telling them that we want them to come here to the Grand Strand to host their groups. And that continues to be a very, very strong part of our overall mix. We want to keep that because a lot of that is midweek business for our businesses. Again, they'll come in on a Monday and they'll stay till Thursday. If we're lucky, they may decide to stay the weekend on their own. So we would put a little bit into group, then we have about 1% into some research, like the Longwoods research, and then 20% of the budget is in television, which we do still do TV, but it's a little bit different than what we were doing even pre-pandemic. Now a lot of it is streaming TV. So think Netflix, Amazon Prime, Hulu, all of those really, really popular what's called connected TV. When people binge-watch, we put our ads right in there, and we get a lot of follow-through with people seeing our ads there and then going to our website. So we've been very busy telling Surfside Beach's story. Just in the last six months or so, we've done six new photo shoots, including the new peer. We've got Finding Our Flavor episodes, which is on Culinary. We hosted a sensory-friendly influencer familiarization tour. So what that is, is basically having families that have children on the spectrum come and spend a little bit of time here in Surfside Beach and around the Grand Strand and having an opportunity for them to see how great it is and what a great place it is for a family vacation. Very happy to announce tonight that the Traveling the Spectrum TV show will be launching in about a week. So again, this is a streaming series. So we're very, very excited about this, and it features three families from different parts of the country, and 90% of it was built here in Surfside Beach. And again, we work very closely with Chamber Autism Network to facilitate all of this. And then we have Surfside's own chef Mason is hosting Chef Swap at the beach. So we just finished season two. The last episode was last week. So we did seven episodes, so 14 more chefs featured. So the finale is going to be airing, and so we'll be able to let everybody know who won. But it's very, very exciting, and now people can see season one for free. If you don't get the cooking channel on your cable package, you can just go to chefswap.com, and you can watch all of season one. And then in a little while, you'll be able to watch all of season two. So we're getting a lot of really, really good feedback from consumers on this, who've known us for our beaches and our golf courses, but really didn't know that we have 2,000 amazing restaurants here to go to. So it's really helping to drive business to our restaurant suite. And then again, doing a lot of targeted promotions. This was something that we did in the visitor guide. There was a whole feature on Surfside Beach, the Family Beach, and featured in a lot of the blogs and social media, included in all of our e-newsletters. So really trying to triple down on Surfside Beach as the Family Beach, and it seems to be really resonating. And then again, these are some examples of what I was saying of pay TV and digital media, where there are lots of little video clips, as you know now. Sometimes just a six-second or a 10-second video clip is all you need to catch someone's attention, and then they move on to click onto the website and to learn more and then to hopefully book. So we're still doing a lot there. Do a lot in social media because it continues to be a very, very popular place to be. And then we just had a really, really good PR season in that it seems like a lot of the top publications and media outlets have been talking about us. We did a lot of meetings with Desk Side Briefings, they're called, with the media last year, and then they pay off several months later. And so HGTV named us top 10 family spring break vacations. Travel and Leisure noted us as 10 affordable spring breaks, destinations in both the US and Mexico, and you'll see just a whole bunch of them. Time Out named us the best spring break destination in the US for every type of traveler. So we're working really, really hard to stay high-profile in public relations, which is, again, great third-party affirmation for us. So we do new developments, releases, every time there's some new business that we want to talk about. We're doing a lot of media pitching right now. We just came back from a New York City mission, because there's a lot of media there. And again, we've been focused on a culinary campaign and a sensory-friendly campaign. I just came back from Charleston, where Travel South Global Showcase came into our state, and so I was able to represent Myrtle Beach and the Grand Strand with, I don't know, I want to say 150 media from all over the world. It was amazing, over three days. I think they gave me my call, but I'm not sure. And so anyway, we're just doing a lot there. And you can see by the numbers, year-to-date, our public relations has generated over 3 billion impressions that we don't have to pay for in ads, right? They're reading the story instead and having a favorable impression of what we have happening here. So we continue to push very, very hard on the PR front. This is Chef Swap, as I mentioned. Season two premiered early in March, and then the last episode aired April 12. Here are some examples of paid digital ads that we've been doing. They're very interactive, so as people are moving with their mouse over the ads, they kind of like pop up, 1, 2, 3, 4, and then when you hit "Let's Go" in the last tag, it brings you right to the website for you to start playing your location. And then here's some examples, again, of some of the paid social and digital ads. So again, lots of paid digital campaign has generated so far over 21 million impressions. And people like this type of content because it's snack size. It's just kind of quick and fast. They can read it and move on. And because we knew that this year, especially coming out the gate, was going to be a little soft, we tried to do some specialty campaigns to kind of plus up what we were doing. So one of those has been around air service, as I mentioned before. We have Avelo and Breeze doing some new things in our markets, also emphasizing a lot of the community events that are going on. We work with Brand USA, which is responsible for promoting the US all over the world. And so we do some tag-along things with them only in two countries, and that's Canada and the United Kingdom, because those are our two best international markets where we have we have the three percent and one percent actual market share there. And as I mentioned before, a lot going on with sports and groups media. In fact, right before I came today, my sports director is at a sports conference in the Midwest, and he called to tell me, very excited that the Grand Strand was just voted the top tourism destination for sports for 2023 by this organization. So we're getting the trophy tomorrow, and we'll be putting a press release out on that, and then sending that to a lot of other sports groups to try to spice them to come and see what all the buzz is about. And then we do what's been seen as custom print, where we are focusing on like sort of a paid editorial. So we're in their social media, we're in their digital, but we're also, again, doing some of these spreads in some of the bigger magazines, like a Southern Living, Food and Wine, Travel and Leisure, to name a few of those. And then these are again, some of the examples of the things that we're doing right now for spring, focusing on our new beer trail, which again, people like, and then we also have an arts trail. So just again, trying to spice things up and give people new ideas and new ways to think about what they can come and do when they come to the Grand Strand. And this is what our map looks like for the entire year. So you see, our strategy is to be on air the entire year, never go dark, because our research has shown if we do a heavy flight and then we're quiet for six weeks, we have to build back up and get people's awareness. And so what we do is we do a level of brand campaigning, and then we do pulses of extra campaigns. So as you can see right now, we're in Shining Nine, and we're getting ready for, you know, the big summer season. So we try to, you know, then do a couple of pushes in September through November season as well, and then we have a small holiday effort at the end of the year. So trying to be on all year, different levels, but just to make sure that we don't lose any of that awareness with our best customers. And again, one of the things we did was to add some extra spring demand. We shifted some media to March, as we saw it was soft, so we just added a few more retail strategies into our campaign to see if we could spur some last-minute visits. March was tough, the weather, if you recall last month, wasn't very conducive, it was kind of cold and it rained a lot. And our data shows whenever Easter is in March, March 31st this year, the last time it was in March was 2018, and you look at the data set and it's the exact same line as 2018. We do so much better when Easter is in April, but that's something, of course, none of us have any control over. I guess next year it's going to be in early April, which would be better, but then next year after that, it's going to be late in April, like around April 20, which always is better because the weather is better and more families are going to come. So trying to just kind of work through that in March, and then we started to see our numbers really go up as soon as we hit Easter and got into this part. And as I say, here's a chart from CoStar, which is one of the companies that tracks hotel occupancy, and it is showing that even though we would remain below 2023 levels in Q1, which was true, we would start to surpass 2023 levels as we go into this quarter, and that's exactly what's happening. So we're starting to see occupancies rise again in April, and we're expecting really big things in May. We have World's Strongest Man premiering May 1 through 5. We have the Myrtle Beach Classic Golf Tournament, May 6 through 12. And we have the NCAA National Track and Field Champions for the first time ever coming to Myrtle Beach, and there'll be a lot of spillover for the entire Grand Strand. So you'll have over a hundred of the best collegiate teams in the country coming to participate at Dunshaw Stadium of the Myrtle Beach. So May should be very, very busy with sports, which should make it a very, very strong month for us. And that's where you can always find more, and that's where citizens can find more. You can follow us on social, but you can also always go to visitmyrtlebeachcb.com, and then all of our campaigns and all of our data that I'm sharing a few is posted on that site as well. So we have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Ms. Reardon? Very nice presentation.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Allen.
Is there any way, when you talk about hotels being occupied by your advertisement, is there a breakdown just to show Surfside hotels? Or is it... No, I can't even see it by specifically hotel, it's a proprietary data for them. They all voluntarily report in, and so I just see the aggregate for the Grand Strand, so I can tell how many hotels any given week are reporting, but they consider that to be their own confidential data, and they don't want us to see that. And I kind of wish I could, but I understand why the hoteliers wouldn't want me to see this specific. So we're not able to really break it out by Surfside Beach. And again, your composition is very different here than, say, North Myrtle Beach. You've got a lot more vacation rental properties, and Smith Travel Research doesn't measure them. So they only measure Holiday Inn, you know, Surfside Beach, Holiday Inn, the so-called flags, that's how the system is set up. We do have another reporting system called Key Data, but again, it's fairly expensive for the vacation rental properties to participate in that, and so most of them have decided that they don't want to invest in that. So all of our data is directional, I will say that. So what I always caution hoteliers is that if you see the occupancy is sixty-two percent this week, and yours wasn't, yours was only fifty-five percent, just take that as direction. There may be another week where you're at seventy-eight percent and everybody else is at sixty-five. It just really does vary, but it's more to just give us kind of a dipstick to kind of understand directionally, how we're doing year-over-year collectively. But unfortunately, there's no way to break it out by property or even by location.
Anything else? I have a few questions. The numbers you showed about, you know, a flat forecast for 2024, that's Grand Strand?
Yes, that's the entire trading area that was...
Okay. And because the Myrtle Beach Grand Strand area is moving up, does that mean that most of the country is actually looking at a slight reduction?
No, I mean, what we're seeing is that cruise lines are coming back with a vengeance, so that is very, very popular. We're also seeing a lot of Americans go back to Europe this year, didn't last year. So, and then some are returning back to big cities. So it's uneven. Some cities and destinations are winners, and some are losers, just depending on what the American public is kind of interested in. But what we've seen since 2020 is that the thing that has not changed, and all the forecasts indicate, is that people want to be in two places, they want to be at the beach, and they want to be in the mountains. And if you're beach, you're in the mountains, you're going to do better than spring in PA, which doesn't have either, so not to pick on them, but you know what I mean? So that has been, you know, we're blessed by geography too, where Surfside and the Grand Strand is. A third of the nation came up to us by car. So even if we didn't have the wonderful air service that we had, people can drive here from Connecticut, they can drive here from New Jersey, they can drive here from Indiana, and they do, as well as Georgia and Florida. So the fact that it's still an affordable vacation, what we're seeing is that people, once we can get them here, they want to come again and again. So that's part of what our building is about, is people coming here.
Okay, and then you mentioned air service. You had a minimal amount of budget going into that.
Yes.
That is informing people of new destinations, cities that are coming here, or new airlines?
Exactly. The way the federal government works, the airport itself can't promote that, so we partner with Ford County Governments and their airport authority. And when Breeze or United or Delta or anyone says they're going to be doing a new flight, we offer a small incentive to say, hey, we'll do fifty thousand dollars worth of advertising to promote your flight from Indianapolis, Indiana to here, and that becomes a carrot for them to say, yes, we'll definitely put that flight in. And then, of course, we have to keep monitoring that to make sure that the seats are full, because if the seats are not full, then they will drop the flight.
And then you take a few thousand from us, a few from North Myrtle Beach, a few from Myrtle Beach.
Exactly, from Ford County overall, and that's kind of how we build that.
Okay, our budget is three hundred and twenty-five thousand projected this year. That's Surfside Beach specific.
Yes, yes, that's for you, based on that three hundred and forty-five thousand that we expect to be collected. And again, that's just a projection. We monitor that, and again, if we create efficiencies, which we've created the last couple of years, and don't have to spend all of that, then we are still efficient. But that's what we're budgeting right now, that we need in order to keep the success levels for Surfside consistent with this amount of money, right? We don't want to cut the budget and then not generate one million, one seventy-six to forty.
Okay. Does the town have any role in working with you and commenting, advising, recommending?
Again, it's always been directly with the Communications Department, so that we work closely together on the plans. We share what we're doing with Tabitha, she shares everything she's doing festival-wise, and that's really been the level of engagement, pretty much how it works for Ford County and Myrtle Beach as well.
Okay. I think I'll probably have one more here. Oh yeah, the holdback, it's up to, or will be up to about a hundred and twenty-five by the end of the year.
Yes.
It's nice that I could write a letter, but do you give advice on what good to spend that on?
Yeah, I mean, I think right now there is no major need that you have. I think the pier is organically unpopular, so like to say, well, let's spend fifty thousand of that to promote the pier, doesn't seem like that would be useful, would be again a good ROI. In the past, I can say that this body has decided that we needed additional rack card brochures, or, you know, other things that we wanted specifically to promote for Surfside Beach. Those have kind of fallen out of favor, they're not as popular, and we still have some older visitors that will come into our visitor center and ask for those, but almost everyone is just looking on their mobile phone and pulling it up and kind of going that way. So there isn't anything specifically, but again, we're happy to be with Tabitha, and we're meet with you, and if you have ideas on something that you think is missing, or we identify a need, then we would definitely suggest that to you. But again, I don't see you spending this whole hundred and seven, never mind the one twenty-four in one chunk. That has never been Surfside Town Council's practice, you've always just taken a little bit for one project that you needed it for.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I have. Anybody else have any last questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Reardon.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to director reports now. We're going to start with Public Works Director Dare, after she has a minute there.
This is all crazy wires here.
Sorry, I should have taken a minute there. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
You remember me on first? I'm just... Good evening, mayor and council and citizens. Nice to see everybody this evening. The Public Works Report from March 24th. Under our sanitation division, residential service or sanitation department delivered twenty-six additional mobile cars into overflow, rental property replacement, and new ownership. Our summer three-time-a-week rollout program begins on May 11th this year. Letters have gone out, and they're coming back from all the R3, C3 residents at this time. They're really being adjusted for. Commercial service routes are being updated based on business needs. Many, many of our commercial stops have been adding additional container pickups, which is a good sign. In March, we collected four hundred and two tons of solid waste, fifty-three tons of mixed debris, hundred and nine tons of yard debris, and forty-nine tons of recyclables. Streets and Genies Division, the town, I might have mentioned this last one, the town has received approval for a grant from DHEC for over twenty-nine thousand dollars for new mosquito spraying equipment to replace some of our aging equipment. No strings attached, no match, that's a great thing for us. Our beach refusers and recycling services are on an enhanced frame schedule for ramping up, of course, for the summertime. Our crews are approximately, your reports in front uses seventy-five cents, close to ninety percent completed with that pier beach access rehab project, that walkway and deck project that we've been doing for a while now, that should be wrapping up in the next week or two. March 28th was Career Day at Seaside Elementary School. We did send two pieces of equipment over there for the kids to look at, like we do every year, but it got rained out, and they were pretty much sent back without too much, too many kids looking at them, so I'll say it next time. Rounds Division, crews have been pruning trees in Memorial Park. Our hanging baskets have been planted at the beginning of April, and actually, eleven of them have been hung on the post this week. You should start seeing those blooming on the posts in the, with this warm weather. Our crews received delivery of the Fuller Park restroom building on April 4th. That building will be open to the public upon final connections and walkway installation. And then that's the last public restroom to be replaced, it's our seventh one of that type. So all the old version, so cinder block ones are gone now. The beds on Highway 17 have been opened eggs and are being layered with pine straw for the season. And our Arbor Day tree planting ceremony will take place this coming Friday, April 26th, at Harrison Park. The tree being planted is a Tuscarora crepe myrtle. In our Fleet Maintenance Division, in March, our mechanics completed sixty-nine repairs on town vehicles and equipment. Additionally, eleven vehicles received preventative maintenance. At the pier, the pier emergency access way has been reopened and the signs posted. Per our ordinance, this area, on either, any other side of this area, this lane is to be kept clear at all times, and that's for our emergency personnel to get on the beach. The pier crew has been diligently cleaning and maintaining all public areas on the pier since its opening. Once fishing begins, those duties will also encompass sink cleaning and periodically checking for the paid status of the fishing patrons. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Director Dare?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kinkin.
John, I think Benny was the one who told me, you had problems with the dogs on the pier. Do we have any way to check to see if a service animal is really a service animal?
It would be difficult. Most people, I think there's maybe you can, you can't ask people what their need is, what their, you know, infirmity is. But basically, I think you can't ask them what service they provide, but, you know, most people are telling my people when they ask, it's a service dog, you know, because the sign says service dogs are allowed. So it hasn't become a problem yet, but as the summer comes along, with a lot more people and fishing activities going on in our pier, I could see that potentially being a problem with a whole bunch of dogs on the pier. So I will do a little more research as to what we can ask, and to see if it's feasible to do that kind of enforcement, to dedicate the kind of time that we need. Or, you know, maybe if you're going to spend eight hours a day asking people about the dogs, you can't get much else done. So that's not a problem today, but it could be a problem. Okay, that's what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Danny.
John, I'd asked you a little earlier about some benches, how many you had left from the pier. Do you think there any way that we might look at putting some down Main Street here in Surfside, on each side of Boulevard, just for people to sit in and enjoy the town a little bit? Do you think that would be feasible for us to do?
I certainly do. Careful placement, of course, is going to be important, so we don't create any obstacles for people to walk. But the sidewalks are wide enough there, on that first block of Surfside Drive, you get about fifteen-foot-wide sidewalks there. You couldn't put them on thirty-eighth South, or say, because you would reduce your walkable area to something that's not legal. But Surfside Drive, I would certainly be happy to look at, and I could install a few benches over there.
I would appreciate it if we could, if we could do that, sort of look into it, if administrator and you can get together on that and look at it, let us know something, whether you can or whether you can't.
Yeah, it's very common in commercial areas, as you know, you know, the place you go, you're going to see benches, and most people are very happy to see them.
Yeah, I noticed, I travel, I've been around several places, and it seems to be that most of these small towns uptown, it's got a place for people just to sit down and enjoy the town just a little bit and move on. So I think, I discussed this before, I think this would be a great idea for a town, since you do have benches left over from the pier that we did not use. And so I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll certainly get looking for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coleman. Years ago, I'm not sure when it stopped, but we used to have a sun lotion trailer. Do we have that anymore?
Well, it was sponsored by the Baptist Church, and they would ask every year if they could put it out there. They stopped doing that, obviously, once the pier was being demolished, but they did it right up until the end, when the pier was torn down. So it's up to them if they want to approach the town for a spot, you know, we could probably find something down there. I mean, I think it was well-received by all the residents and the visitors, that somebody was available to help them treat sunburn and prevent a...
It was nice touch to the town, the town at that.
Yes.
But you think you'll have someone if they... But you think you'll have someone if they require about twenty-eight?
Yeah, well, if they have the same vehicle, we'll see if we got room for it. We'll bring it to council for a blessing and take it up once and for all. But I'm not opposed to it. Thank you.
Anything else? The Fuller Park restroom is a couple of weeks away, you think, or is it a longer?
Probably no more than a couple of weeks. Yeah, we have to form out just the walkways and the ramp systems and put railings on in front of the bathroom. And we're doing the pier sidewalk at the same time, so we have one fork of the cement company. And once that's done, we're pretty much, the bathroom's already hooked up to the water and the electric. It's just a couple of finishing touches, a little landscaping in there, the walkway, a couple of weeks.
All right, cool. And then fishing, has Perry's given any indication when they think they'll be ready?
Well, we can talk a little bit more about the presentation in a round, but if you answer this particular question, I'm just hearing a couple more weeks. I have two or three weeks on hand. He's well underway, let's put it that way.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you, Director Adair.
Thank you much.
Police Department Chief Hoffman.
Good evening, mayor, council and citizens. I have a report for you for the police department for the month of March. Our statistics show that there was a thirteen-point-six percent increase in calls for service from March of last year. Arrested citation data between March of last year and March of this year indicated a twenty-four-point-seven-six percent increase. No personnel actions to report. Training activities was included through your review. In summary for the month of March, police department answered one thousand five hundred and four calls for service, resulting in thirty-four custodial arrests, three hundred and six uniform traffic citations and thirty-six ordinance summonses that could include parking violations. There were seven criminal arrest warrants issued and one of those was related, was related to drug possession or distribution. Police department issued three hundred and thirty-four written warnings in the month of March, all of uniform traffic citations. Our victim advocacy staff attempted to contact sixty-seven complainants to conduct customer service surveys. Contact was made with twenty-two of those people. All contacted persons reported that the police officers that responded were prompt and professional. All of the four respondents stated that their issue was resolved. Four unresolved matters are ongoing investigations within the police department. Some notable events and activities that we participated in, the police department participated with our friends of the fire department in a safety fair that, in training that conducted child passenger and seat, child passenger seat installations and safety checks. Police department participated in the following community events. The sixtieth birthday celebration of pier opening, the first Baptist church, Easter egg hunt, town Easter egg hunt, the Burgess Elementary Career Day, the Seaside Elementary Career Day, United Methodist Church Public Service Day. I included this year's statistics so far, so far and also last year's statistics through review and comparison. And that is the fourth of March, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chief Hoffman?
I guess I'll just ask then, you know, thirteen percent increase in calls and arrested citation twenty-four-point-seven-six increase. Any reason, anything stand out?
This has been pretty steady for the last couple of years. We've seen the monthly increase from the year before going on. It's actually down just a little bit. We've been seeing twenty-five to thirty percent increases each month in calls for service. So similar to your report from the chamber earlier, as tourism increases, so will demands on police services. And I think that's probably an indicator of some results of that. I think that'll also continue significantly through the summer this year.
All right. Anything else?
All right, thank you, chief, thank you very much.
Fire Department Chief Nelson, you knew he was next.
Department personnel has been notified of all potential ideas and moving forward with improvements with department citizens. We're excited to announce that firefighter engineer Xavier Chason has passed his EMT course and is taking care of our sick and injured within the community. We also wish to congratulate Captain Kelly for completing his fire investigation course, which is a forty-eight-hour course throughout the South Carolina Fire Academy. And we're happy to have Captain Wilt Banks back who was out for some medical. We're hoping to have rescue pumper back within the next two weeks after having repairs done on it. We've initiated a training regiment for the career volunteer within the department for training. I've met with the volunteers and plan to have another meeting to discuss ideas for bringing in more volunteers. And today, we actually met with HR and Captain Delisandro, who's a volunteer captain, to streamline our application process for getting our volunteers in. We did add one more volunteer in this month, who's an interior firefighter, and we have eight more applications in currently. We're also looking for anyone that wants to volunteer, preferably anybody younger. It takes more younger people to go interior and that's where we're lacking the most. Fire Inspector Williams has completed two courses this last month, fire codes and standards and community risk production. We're proud to have hosted an autism Easter egg event at the station. We had fifty-one inspections this year, sorry, this month, a hundred and eight violations. We had two false alarms this month. A false alarm is an alarm that goes off when somebody falsely pulls the pull station. We're doing something to cause alarm to go off. When it, when it can be prevented, the businesses are not building anything as far as that mean. If it would go off for some type of cooking incident, that's what it's supposed to go off for. We don't bill for that, that's what the purpose of it is. But after three false alarms, we do bill for that within one year. If it's a malfunction with the system, you're working on the system, you didn't put it in the test mode. These are the types of things that we do. We've received a replacement for the jet ski and UTV. And we're working on consolidating our reports a little bit more. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Nelson?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coleman. Can you explain the difference between the fire inspector and the fire investigator?
Sure. A fire inspector actually goes to businesses, looks for any violations or anything like that. A fire investigator would be somebody that comes in after a fire to find the cause of the fire.
Can you tell me what happened with the rescue pumper, is it under warranty? It was down and?
I'm not sure if it's under warranty. I know it had some scratches and stuff like that and it was being taken care of.
Oh, that's the scratch.
Correct.
It wasn't the?
No, nothing with pumps or anything like that, it's just bodywork that was being done.
When it was fixed, the pump was under warranty or?
Yes, sir, it was not a problem. Sorry, I haven't even seen the rescue pumper yet, so I apologize.
And that two-hundred-dollar false alarm, is that for residents too or just for businesses?
I think as far as I know, it's just for the businesses. I can check into that and I'll get back to you for sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Shaw.
Chief, have we, have you looked into, when we had talked, you said something about when you respond to an accident, about charging, there's, have you?
Actually, I got a packet today and I plan to present that to you guys in your next budget meeting or your workshop meeting, as well as billing for fire inspections as well.
I don't know if everybody knows what, could you explain that a little bit?
So actually, we have an ordinance already in place that allows us to bill for for motor vehicle accidents and structure fires. Everybody's insurance has a built-in clause that allows some funding to come back to the fire department. We currently do not bill for it. It doesn't raise your premiums or anything like that, it's built into the system. Where I was at, we brought in eighty-four thousand dollars alone just off of that billing process. What I would like to see us do is be able to use that for our training rounds because currently we really don't, we just have a spot and that's it. There's two connects boxes there, we really could use to put some concrete in there and make this a training facility where our people can go there and get some good training and stuff like that, especially if we get new volunteers and stuff. So that's, that's pretty much what it is. It's a third-party system, they bill out for it, they would only bill wherever we cover. Let me take that back, only within the town limits because we can't bill within Ori County, they don't wish to do that. What we would do is bill our residents one time, whatever the insurance company pays, that's what we would collect. There'd be no other further billing going out to anybody as far as money out of your pocket or anything like that. Visitors and stuff like that, we would bill three times and then we would let that go as well. But visitors aren't paying our taxes and stuff like that, so we could generate some income off that if they have accidents.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coleman. So we don't charge right now.
Correct.
And we could possibly charge, say someone has an accident and it's part of their insurance, I have a fund that they will give to us.
Correct. We actually have an ordinance in place that allows us to do this already, but we're just not doing it.
But if it's open in Ori County, we respond with a first, when we take care of it, we can.
Bill right. Because it's a contract area that we're not, we're not good resident of, we're just covering that area.
And I just want to clarify, you're billing the insurance company.
Correct.
Correct, the?
The company goes after the insurance company, asking for whatever the funds are, if there's a base product put down. Like if we had three hundred feet of hose, we bill for the three hundred feet of hose, it's not personnel. How long we're on scene, if we do an investigation, if we use tools to catch people out and stuff like that, that's how it's all billed. It's all broken down.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Danny. You're talking about that fund that they charge for accidents and stuff. I actually think we booted that in about a year ago back or so. And I think they found out it wasn't feasible really because they could never get that money turned back into them when they go out because of a small area they got to cover. And maybe that's the reason it is not being used much now. Maybe that was some of the fact of history on that, that I don't think they could really get a whole lot of money from what they, the more than they could cover.
The only thing we collect actually is, once they collect it, they'll take like fifteen percent, whatever that is they collect. So it's money that we're getting that we wouldn't be getting period anyway, so. I'm not, I'm not saying we're going to make eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's very low for this time.
Anything else? All right, thank you, chief. We're now going to move on to the public information and events. And Ms. Mall is not here, so I think it's Administrator Vincent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, tablet was unable to be here. So I'll try to do it as cheer for you, she's not.
Well, I could know.
No way. So you've got a report in front of you, just want to hit some of the highlights. The next edition of the quarterly newsletter will be delivered in April, including the lottery. It's also posted on the website, so if anybody wants to see a copy of the residence, I believe it's sent to just about every resident in Surfside Beach, so it's been a big hit as far as news-worthy items. Next, social media, we have seventeen new followers now. Town merchandise, pink V-net t-shirts are available at town hall, hats and stickers are in the works. Myrtle Beach Area Chamber partnership, the pier committee, pier campaign continues and will be focused on driving tourism to the town, to the pier, to the E District and the grand opening that will take place. And this is a change, it's the twenty-first of September, not the second of September. Also, the events that are coming up, due to the inclement weather, the annual barbecue festival scheduled for Saturday, May the fourth, from ten AM to four PM. The Anything But Barbecue, Friday, May third, from four to seven PM. Lap Music in Memorial Park begins Sunday, May fifth, from four to seven PM. And we had a retirement here at the civic center. One of our long-term employees, or longtime employees for thirty-nine years, retired about two weeks ago from the Public Works Department. So we thank all the community and members who attended. And then she's got that glass, each community yard, so I'll say hi.
Any questions for Administrator Vincent? You didn't bring the pink V-net t-shirt to it?
I did, no.
Bottle horse, okay.
But they're at town hall.
All right. Okay, then I guess we'll move on to planning, building and zoning and we'll just stay with Administrator Vincent.
The business report, code enforcement has thirty-five complaints and violations and enforcement inquiries in the month of March. These range from vehicle expired license tags to signs in their way to destruction, work being performed without permit and verifying setbacks. We made forty-two address corrections in the land records from February second to March the thirty-first. And this is important because it ensures that the emergency responders can find the location in a timely manner. So that's, that's, we've hit a home run there. I don't know, you know, we've had a number of wrong addresses or two buildings having the same address. So we're doing a lot of corrections there. Again, I've given you the staff update that we have a permit tech and code enforcement officer that's full-time. We have a building inspector who is a certified CBO. Has been hired last, is on part-time right now, has been hired the last couple of weeks. And also, because we have our CBO on a part-time basis, we're actually scaling back safe build on their hours to do our plan for due and our inspections. The number of permits per year, you'll see in March, this year we have a hundred and twenty-six permits opposed to a hundred and sixty-six last year. Permit fees per year in March, just lasted fifteen thousand and five hundred. Last year was twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. Number of inspections per year in March of this year, a hundred and thirty-four, as opposed to eighty-eight of last year. And then number of tree inspections in March, thirty-one this year, nine-two as of last year.
Any questions for Administrator Vincent on the planning, building and zoning report?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coleman.
The vehicle expired license tag. So somebody has a car that's been sitting in the yard or it has to be on the street?
I believe the, if it's on the street, I believe the police takes care of it, so I would say it's in the yard for code enforcement.
Because we have several houses that have, not only one, two, some have five cars, no plates, or expired registrations. We can call the building office?
The code enforcement official?
Yeah.
Because I believe if the car is, does not have the proper or up-to-date inspections or license tags, then they, it has to be, there's a certain code that says they have to be covered or behind a fence.
What about if somebody moves down here and doesn't get registered? You have to do it in a certain amount of time, I think it was thirty days?
Yeah, I think it's thirty days.
And if they don't do that, can they re-report it to?
Well, if it's someone that just moved down here, then we, I think we give them time.
Right.
It takes a while, but.
But if you're here a couple of years, you should be paying.
Yes, sir. Correct.
What would you call?
Call our PBNC office.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, you were.
I have a part B of what Mr. Coleman said. Because I had a resident that called me right down the street from her. They have three vehicles, they don't even look like they're drivable. None of them have tags, so they covered them, but it still looks like a car lot. So you're telling me that we have no way to get a residence to remove junk cars? They just put a cover on them and that's it?
I can say that if our ordinance is not as restrictive as you want it to be, then we need to change your ordinance.
I think we need to look into that.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wallace. I just wondered, I know this is not really something you're involved with on a day-to-day basis, Jerry, but do you have any input on it for why such a, on the permit fee? Any, why such a dip from last year? I mean, that's, that's lower than March twenty-twenty. I mean, that's.
I don't, I can't, I don't have a reason for that.
I just wondered because she seems to be, she seems to be capturing, capturing more.
Yeah, just the month before was twenty-five thousand and the year before that was only fourteen, so.
I was just, yeah, I was just curious if you could enlighten us any on that, but. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Vincent? All right, then we will move on to finance, Director Gruber.
Good evening. I just noticed there's a typo in my first sentence there, sort of say, wow, March expenditures instead of January. The general fund revenue through March was six-point-one million and our expenditures are six-point-three. Our property tax collections are three-point-seven-one, so we have reached hundred percent of our budget, a little bit over that. In February and March, there were sixty-two new business licenses opened. In February and March, there were 62 new business license accounts opened, 13 more new businesses, 13 new rentals, 21 new contractors, and 15 out-of-town businesses. Hospitality collections were $1.8 million, and local tax, we are at $389 through March. The accommodations tax that the chamber was talking about earlier, I actually just got notified about third quarter. Looks like it'll be $75,000, which is actually a little less than last year. Our capital projects, the road fees that we have received through March are $95,000. And stormwater utility fund, our stormwater collections are $460,000 through March. I added the, I continue to put the pier summary of construction costs on there. Nothing's really changed there, obviously. The sanitation fund has $1.17 million in revenue, and expenditures are $933,000. And they continue to cover all expenses with their revenue collected. Our parking revenue totals $388,000, and expenditures are $198,000 through March. And I continue to add the investment pool on here, so you can see where we're at. At the end of March, our interest rate was 5.54, so we're staying at 5, well, at a 5% level.
Any questions for Director Gruber?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Shaw.
Question I have, because this has been brought up to me. We don't, have we identified, like, the Airbnbs that people are running out, that we don't know that are running out?
I'll have to get back to you on that. You talked to Nicole about that, but I don't know, she have a way of doing that.
Because I had a couple of residents calling me and saying, you know, my next-door neighbor is running out like an Airbnb, you know, Airbnb. And I just don't know how, because that's tax money we're not getting.
Right. I think that's not just an issue here, it's an issue.
It's an issue everywhere, I understand that. But it's also, they're doing it where there's not supposed to be short-term rounds.
Oh, okay.
And would that come under maybe the zoning?
Yeah, so we, I think we received one over the weekend, or late last week, so we reported that to our business manager. And so we had a code enforcement go out to check on that. And so they understand that they cannot do short rounds. So we'll keep an eye on that.
Okay.
So that's, that's a code enforcement official duty as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cohen.
I have another number of residents who, they like to know about the credit cards. And the way it used to be, you used to have a number, and you could identify who's actually using it. I Google, and I don't see why there's a problem happening, the number on there. There's no way, according to, I could be wrong, according to Google, you can't get any information. Why have we changed it? And can we change it back? And if you can't put the numbers down, can you put someone's initial down, the department down, or does people want?
Yes, and actually, it might be, it's like, my, there's a credit card with mine name on it, but people have to sign it out for me, so it's not me making all the purchasing order. So, and then like same thing for the, for travel cards, they're by department, so you would know which department. But everything I read is, you should not put the last four digits, because that does put you at risk. I think we have changed that the past, if you look what we just did last month, we have put account numbers, so you should be, you can tell where the spending is by the account numbers.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add that, that this last one actually shows what department, and actually which fund this being charged to. I don't know if you noticed that, but my turn is actually better than just having the last four, in my opinion.
I didn't look at the last one.
Okay. You guys asked last time.
I can show you what I mean. I already have it all laid out. It's actually more information now.
Mr. Mayor, we just changed that recently, because there's been a request regarding the four, so we wanted to identify it even better about the department and the source.
Thank you for that.
Very good. Any other questions for Director Gruber? Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our communications. We're going to now move into item seven, business. I'm going to start with a appointment of an interim police chief, and I'll ask Administrator Vincent to introduce that topic.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Effective May 3rd, as we know, Kenny Hoffman will no longer be our police chief. Also, we will not have a command presence in the police department. We'll have our lieutenant, Wes Pope, that will also retire, resign, and then our captain position is vacant as well. So, in order to keep morale and a steady flow of someone who knows the operations, I had contacted Detective Kenny Davis. I knew that when he was employed with the town September of 2023, I know that, I knew that he had been a retired Ori County Deputy Police Chief. So I had asked Mr. Davis to speak with me about this leadership role on an interim basis, in a temporary basis until a police chief is hired by Town Council. So, just to give you his resume, Detective Davis brings over 30 years of law enforcement experience in this position. He served a number of various leadership roles. He's, he was not only just a deputy chief with Ori County, but he's also been police chief in several other localities in South Carolina, Tennessee, and also a city administrator in South Carolina. He's got the impressive educational background, including a PhD in public safety, a master's degree in criminal justice, and a bachelor's degree from the Citadel. So, I had contacted council by email on May 15th to indicate my intentions of making this announcement, and here are no objectives. As of April 19th, I went ahead and sent the press release. And I know, Mayor, we talked about informally, we'll formally go ahead and have the council bless this appointment.
All right, thank you. I guess before we have any more discussion, I will request a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stamey.
I'd like to make a motion that the administrator has the right to, perhaps giving the right to appoint a interim police chief for the town.
Well, discussing.
I'll second that motion now.
Okay, now, I guess I need a clarification. I think we need to vote on the appointment, but you're asking that we give him the ability to just make the appointment?
I, that, for me, that's fine with me, to give him the ability to make that appointment. I think, and then he can bring that person for council?
Okay, I guess, the discussion that the administrator I had is, is what does chapter two say about interim appointments? And it basically says nothing.
Right.
It says appointments. I'll just be very transparent. I think that means that any appointment needs to be voted upon. Administrator Vincent was seeing not, no specifics about interim, but he had the ability to just make the appointment. I can ask the attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I looked at it for this evening, at the same thing. It doesn't directly address interim appointments. Obviously, his authority, administrative authority is pretty broad under section two as well. But I think what we're already in the process of doing, probably be the best way to go about it, is to have council approve the, or vote on rather, the specific appointment of the nominee from the administrator. That'll just take care of everything.
Thank you. It seems to be clear as well. Mr. Cohen.
I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Kenny Davis as the interim police chief.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. To appoint Kenny Davis as interim police chief, is there any other discussion? All right, with that, Ms. Medina?
Ms. Fallon? No. Mr. Pinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Crecklow?
Yes.
Mr. Stamey?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mayor Kraus?
Yes. Motion carries six to one, and we will now have Mr. Davis as our interim police chief, starting May 4th. All right. The next item is 7B, second reading of ordinance 24-0966, Chapter 9, miscellaneous offenses, which this is, the update is for the parking spaces that we are leasing, I guess, selling to the various businesses. Can I have a motion to approve this, this second reading?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 24-0966, second reading specifically of Section 9-9D, purchasing parking spaces in the gravel lot, up to 16 spots in the gravel lot.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cohen.
Is this forever, or is this, look at one year and see how it works out?
Well, the motion, because I remember I made it, was for one year. This does not say that. It, I mean, we're all, we'll all be here next year. It could be just incumbent upon us to, to remember that, I suppose. Do you want to amend the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I want to hear from Mr. Coleman first. Are you suggesting an amended motion?
I would just like to put that it's only for a year, and then on the view.
Yeah, so, so do you want to make an amended motion?
Yes.
To, to, okay.
I'd like to make the amended motion to have it only for one year, and then review it for the future.
I'll second that.
Okay, we now have an amended motion to add the verbiage. I guess, we could just put it at the end to say, this applies for the 2024 season, yeah, or, or calendar year, because the parking change, it ends before the calendar year. So I think that would suffice. Mr. Stamey, did you, were you working through that?
That was what I was trying to do, go ahead, amend it. I didn't know if Perry was going to, but yeah, that's what I wanted to do.
All right, that's very good. Any other discussion on that, then? Okay, we now have an amended motion to approve Section 9.9 as written, with the statement that these changes apply to 2024 calendar year only. Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Medina?
Ms. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkin?
Are we voting on the amended motion, or?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Crecklow?
No.
Mr. Stamey?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mayor Kraus?
And yes, that motion carries six to one. All right, we are now moving into items, business item 7C, fishing fees, process and procedures with Perry's Bank and Baccal. We'll have Director Adair again.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council and citizens. This is sort of a housekeeping item. The council voted last year on what the fishing fees were to be at the pier, at least for the first year, and those are established. Administrator and I sat down with Craig from Perry's Bank and Baccal, which is the obvious vendor who would sell these for us. And through some back and forth, he has agreed he will sell the daily wristbands and the weekly seven-day passes for us for a fee. The previous tenant that was there, the old pier, I believe was taking 10% of the, what we took in. Fees that are being proposed is, he will take $2 off a daily wristband, which is about 16%, and he'll take $5 off of a weekly pass, which is about 11%. So it's just slightly more than what we were paying, you know, 10 years ago to the vendor. Albeit, it's a much smaller shop, you know, he's going to be busy, so I don't think it's outlandish. The town will handle the sales of the annual carts to the public at Town Hall. They will be numbered for, this is sort of what everything's going to look like. Not the scale, of course.
Do you have any?
I went on the website to the council agenda, I didn't see the attachment, so I just wanted to make sure you have it.
We got it.
And so what you see in front of you would be numerous, different colored wristbands for various days, which is the same program we had before, so people can't wear the same wristband day after day. It'll be a random type of thing. The weekly seven-day passes will be punched by the retailer as they come in to fish, and they'll get a daily wristband at that time. So they can't use that same punch over and over again. And then the annual passes will be good for the year in which it's sold. The signage, which will go up at the pier, will specify that the wristbands are only good on the day of sale, and the seven-day passes and the annual passes are only good in the calendar year of purchase. And they'll all be numbered with control numbers. So when there's a monthly accounting reporting to the town of how much money was taken in, we can see what car numbers and what wristband numbers have you gone for, so we can make sure that one drives with the other. Perry's will be handling the fees, as I said, and any required expenses. We're going to provide these things to Perry's. Any additional expenses that he encourages doing this program will be deducted from our net that he returns into the town the other month, exactly how it was handled in the past. It worked out very well. So basically, what we're asking council to do is to agree to this process, and we can get started with, as soon as he opens up, getting the fishing started.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stamey.
John, who's going to keep up with these?
Mr. Mayor. You need to have a book.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay. So, yeah, you want to just pick that up, Mr. Stamey?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the fishing, our papers for the fishing pier.
Second. All right, so we have, we have a motion to approve the fishing fees, process, and procedures presented by Director Adair. So, Mr. Stamey, you've got the floor.
John, who's going to keep up with these daily passes? Who's going to be able, is it your people goes out and checks for these things, or will Perry be responsible to go out and look?
Well, Perry's will not be doing any enforcement on the pier. Our people will be doing periodic inspections on the pier to make sure everybody has a visible pass, whether it's a daily wristband for a daily or a seven-day holder, or if they have an annual pass. These passes are all going to have little holes in them, like a luggage stand, where they're going to have to affix to their belt or to their fishing cart, so it's going to be visible at all times. The signage that we're going to post is going to say that all fishing passes must be on display at all times while you're fishing. And the police beach patrol, the ambassadors, are also during our heavy time in the middle of the afternoon, are going to come up and help us as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walls.
That was the only, just a B part to that. I'm, I'm seeing some issues with being able to enforce the punches on the seven days. How are we gonna?
Well, are we gonna man that gate when they walk through and punch it?
No.
A seven-day, or how do we?
This is why we decided to go with the seven-day pass rather than like a weekly pass, because some people don't go fishing that often. So your seven-day pass might last you the whole summer. But every time you go and get a punch, this is what's going to force you to get a punch. You're going to get a daily wristband for that particular day's color.
Ah.
So when you're fishing, we know you belong there. And then we know you got your ticket punch today. So I think this is going to catch, you know, pretty much anything that happened.
Okay.
And then the enforcement, you know, will there be somebody who just walks out there with a fishing rod? Yeah, naturally. We stopped, we stopped people this week going out there with fishing rod, with all these signs up saying, no fish. But, you know, we'll be able, we'll be able to monitor it periodically, you know, hourly, who knows, half-hourly, as often as possible during the day, and kindly tell people to go and pay their fee. You know, we don't want... You know, we don't have the luxury like we had before, with, they had to actually go through that store to get out onto the pier, the old pier, if you recall, so they had eyeballs on as soon as they came out, but, yeah, we'll do the best we can to police it. Especially, they won't be fishing long until someone notices them.
I just didn't think about the idea, I'm sorry, but, John, in interacting, I, I didn't think about the idea of them being able to get punched, they would get a wristband too. That's the way to control.
Yeah, yeah, the wristbands are, they're probably inexpensive, and it's, it's, we'll use the same color as the daily, so just by walking, you know that they, they got their punch for the day, and they use the punch.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coleman? The fees, adults have to pay, children don't have to pay?
Children under twelve are free with a, with a, with a paying.
Do they get a wristband too, or they don't get a wristband? Yes, I'm just trying to figure out, if you bring three kids under twelve, you get three wristbands, how are you gonna?
I think probably.
How are you going to account for those wristbands?
I think the probably easiest way to handle that would be to give them the wristband for the day's color. This way, there's no question. Because he could ask them in the store if they're under twelve, and if they say, yeah, they're under twelve, or they look like they're sixteen, he could say, can you, you know, can you prove it? Now, that's, it's incumbent on him to figure that out, you know, so when we walk into pier, we see kids with a wristband, we know that they've been vetted already.
What I'm saying though is, you're going to account for every single wristband, right? You're going to have a number on it?
Also.
And you'd be giving out free ones, how do you account for, how do you know?
There would have to be a separate line for free admissions. Like, you have, how many dailies I sold, how many weeklies I sold, and how many free ones I got, and that should, it should all equal out, that how many dispersed, you know, dispersed at the end of the month, because I want to have control numbers on them, so I'll know what your next number is for April first, or May first, with one, the number one-two-seven-five, you know, hopefully it'll add up.
And they're going to put the wristband on in the store?
Yes. Yes, that's how it was always done. That's worked out pretty well.
Anything else for Director Adair? All right, with that, I think, Ms. Medina, go ahead.
Ms. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Kinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Crecklow?
Yes.
Mr. Stamen?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mayor Kraus?
I'll be yes, that's unanimous, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item seven D, Surfside Beach Fire Department and Ori County Consolidation Administrator Vincent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. I know there's been a lot of discussion during a bunch of retreats and during our workshop that we had last week, and we did listen to the audience and to the residents of their concerns, so. With the budget deficit of one point eight million dollars, considering that the Surfside Beach Fire Department maintains eighteen mills to support basic services, twenty-seven mills to add additional firefighters to, to support the services, and thirty mills based on a proposed plan by Ori County to fully staff our operations with nineteen-plus firefighters, staff would request to fully study the implications of this consolidation plan throughout twenty-twenty-four. According to Ori County, we have until, we have a year, but we have, say, until December of twenty-twenty-four to completely study our options with final approvals prior to July one of twenty-twenty-five. As we continue to work through the budget process for twenty-twenty-five, by adding three firefighters approved with this fiscal year twenty-four budget, and adding four more or additional firefighters as requested by Chief Nelson, staff will explore utilizing a combination of millage increases and hospitality tax. The bu, next budget workshop is April the thirtieth at ten a.m. here at Pacific Center, so my recommendation would be to delay this consolidation plan until we can look at the numbers of the next budget work session.
All right, thank you very much. I don't think we need a motion to not do anything, but I, I think I'll open up the, for questions of Administrator Vincent or Chief Nelson.
I want to start it out.
All right, Mr. Stamen.
Gerald, what's, what have y'all looked at that you've seen a difference from last Thursday, when we had a meeting to see that you, that it is even feasible to do this? Have y'all looked at something that council is not privileged to yet, that, that maybe it's changed y'all's mind about this?
We're talking more with the municipal league, our representative Charlie Baranu, and we understand that towns and cities and counties within this region are using more and more of their hospitality tax to help offset the general fund expenditures. I think last couple of years, we've been very conservative, but I think now is the time to use as much as we can under the regulations, and not maximize, but use as much as we can under the reg, regulations to fund a department or additional employees. If it's the fire department, then I think that's the way we should go. It may be a combination of a millage increase and hospitality tax.
Mr. Mayor, can I finish up the list?
Absolutely.
Gerald, since, since we're talking about it, what do you think the millage rate would be for this town at this point? I mean, I know you don't know for positively sure, but what would it take for this town, millage rate-wise, to sustain what we need in this town for this year? And, and follow that with, how long do you think this is going to, is this going to be a, a, a long period of time that it's going to take, or are we going to have a problem four, three years down the road that, that we can't paint this?
Mr. Stamen, it's going to be a council policy decision, but if you look at the three firefighters for this fiscal year and adding four by the, by the firefighters, Fire Chief Nelson's request, that's eight mills. So I'm asking, what I'm going to take to the workshop on the thirtieth is do a combination of increasing the tax rate by four mills and offset the other four mills with hospitality tax. So instead of going with Ori County and having a twenty-three-mill impact, we're looking at eight mills, offsetting it with hospitality tax, and only have a four-mill increase.
When this happens, we are going to set up workshops for the public to come and listen to what we're doing. We ain't going to hide none of this. We're going to be out and open and, and make sure the public knows all this, what we're doing.
April thirtieth is an open workshop to citizens.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I, I'm, I'm going to make some comments, then. We, we hired Chief Nelson just about a month ago, maybe a little more, to, to advance our fire department, and I, I, it was a surprise to all of us to see the, the budget numbers and, and, you know, and look at that big disconnect. But the fact that we do have a year to consider this, and, and also knowing that really once we would move to Ori County, it's, it's pretty irreversible. I think we owe Chief Nelson a chance to, to try to put this together. We're, we're looking at some more volunteers now, that's good. Obviously, that's not the only answer, and the millage increase in hospitality will help that. I still have concerns, because I, I don't think we'll ever be able to attain the staffing levels that Ori County would provide, but I'm also concerned about service. Firefighting is different than police, because it's so collaborative, and, and equipment and personnel can be anywhere in the area at any time. The other concern I have is if we continue to maintain our force, we are going to lose that ambulance. Ori County has said they're going to take that and move it to Presley. But having said that, we do have a good six months to consider, to work through the budget here, consider, you know, try to hire people, consider what we can do and can't do, and we lose nothing by waiting that, that time. We can approach it next year, but next year, we need to really know what we're doing. And as Mr. Stamen says, I fully support every one of these discussions being public, and I encourage all residents to think about this deeply and from every angle, and, and reach out to your council members and let us know what you think. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kinkin?
I sent an email to Chief Nelson and Jerry, thinking, okay, if we add the seven people, that puts four, four per shift. Can he use volunteers or part-time to add two more per shift? So that we end up with the same staffing that the county would have, even though we do lose the ambulance, we've never had that ambulance here anyway. This has always been the county's ambulance. It's gone more than it's here, so we're really not losing anything with that. But we do need the coverage, and I want, I want the firefighters to be able to arrive on job and be safe, and have enough people to man what they have to do. So that's what I've asked them to do. He's not said no, but from what he said, he's working on, working on more volunteers. And I, I can't see that we could ever staff six per shift all the time. I just think that's, and I'm talking about paid firefighters, I just, I think that's more than the town can do, and, but I think we have to do the seven, and it will, I'm glad we can use hospitality for some of it, because we were looking at an eight-mill increase to cover the seven. So we're headed in the right direction. I know a lot of people have talked to me that they want to keep control, because once we move the fire department into the county, we'll never get it back, and we'll have no control. At least this way, we will have control, and it probably costs us less money in the long run. Except, we're not selling the building of their equipment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Michelle?
I just want to re-estate, because talking to Chief Nelson, he also says that firefighters, some firefighters are EMSs too, and you're a paramedic, correct? Can you clarify so that people understand that if we go down this road and we do lose the EMS, at least one of the firefighters come on hand, Ori County would have to show up with an EMT eventually?
All, all of our staff are EMTs, basic level at this time. We do have two paramedics that are on each ship, and with the hiring of the potential of the next seven, we're hoping to get one more, so that every ship would have a paramedic currently on it. And on that engine, we have drugs, a cardiac monitor, everything that the ambulance would have except for the capabilities to transport, so that's where we're at.
I appreciate that, and I like to keep saying that over and over, so people understand all the facts. So I appreciate, I know I've asked that before, but I've been asked this past week about the EMS, and I just appreciate you restating that. It makes people more comfortable to know that the service will still be there in some kind of capacity.
Right, we, we want to make sure that everybody's going to be taken care of. If there was a cardiac arrest or something, we have everything that the ambulance has on it, except for the gate buildings to transport. That's the only thing that we would be lacking.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coleman?
So with seven, it's not, it's not, can we have six or seven? We have to have six or seven, because right now, where, where it is, is, is only two firefighters work in each shift, and when they get there, all they can do is hook up a hydrant and pull hose, and then they have to wait for reinforcements to come. If you have four people, you can actually do something, you know, more than just stand there and hook up hoses. You've actually rescued people. You can stop, or on the fire and stuff. This isn't if we, we should do it, we have to do this. It's been too long that we haven't had enough firefighters here. It used to be great when everyone used to volunteer. It, it was a wonderful world. It's not the same world now. People just don't volunteer to do something. And I believe a seventh firefighter would be a, a, a fire inspector or marshal or something.
Correct. The, the seven, we would put a, a total of three on the engine and one on the aerial as a driver operator. The seventh person would be helping out the fire inspector to get more fire inspections done. The goal is also to be able to start fiddling for fire inspections, and that position would be paid for with the fire inspections. With that, also, the fire inspector would do, if we were to get a structured fire or anything like that, they would respond to the scene and assist on that aerial apparatus for us. And then the goal is, we, we would put part-time staff on as well. The goal is to add seven more. We currently have two, so that gives us three per ship. So if we have somebody call off sick, or if they go on vacation, that we can have that covered by a part-time staff, that we're not generating overtime. And then on the weekends, when that fire inspector would be off, because they would work from Monday through Friday, we could fill that with part-time staff, so that we still have a total of seven, five people on a ship.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stamen?
I'd like to follow up on that. When you say, can, can, is this something that we have to have, this fire inspector, do we, I mean, can we not work with, if we could get just the firemen for now? I mean, we can work on, on this later on, but right now, we need firefighters. We don't need a, a person who comes in and inspects. We have a, our marshal now.
Right, as, as I said before, Fisher, we're not capable of getting through half of our businesses currently. By getting in there and finding these type of issues and problems, we're mitigating the fire from even happening to begin with. So this is a preventive measure that would help us out. Like I said, I feel if we do fire inspection fees, it would be paid for with the fire inspection fees.
But when I, what I'm saying is, we're looking at trying to staff fire trucks to get them out. I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but it's a money thing. It's, it's all about money right now. Before, we haven't enough money to pay for these people. And, and to me, I don't know about everybody else here, but for, to me, I'd rather have people on that truck that I'd pay them people instead of a fire inspector right now.
This person would be going on the truck as well.
He would be on, on one of the ship, on them ships.
He would work Monday through Friday. Anytime we had a call out, he would go responding for that call.
Any other questions for Chief Nelson or the Administrator?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coleman?
I just also want to point out that our fleet apparatus is getting older.
Correct.
And some of it can cost close to a million dollars, some of it more, so everybody has to know all the facts.
So we, we have two apparatuses that were purchased in twenty-ten. The average apparatus age limit is twenty years, and then we need to start looking at replacement, because if we don't, then we're not going to be able to get hearts for that apparatus. The aerial is at that, and our engine that we currently have. I haven't got to check the rescue, because it hasn't been here since I've gotten here. What my goal would be is that we look at funding for the aerial first, and then I'd like to see if we could hold off a couple more years, so that we spread it out, so that we don't have this problem in the future that we got to buy two apparatuses. An engine's one million dollars, and aerial, last I spent was one point seven. I'm sure by the time we do it, we're looking at two million. So the price.
And then we're talking also about radios, about the new radios.
Correct.
That is going to be obsolete soon. So that's like six thousand dollars a radio.
We're looking at two hundred thousand dollars roughly for radios. Air packs are, are within the next three to five years, and I'm going to be putting five, ten-year capital expense together for you guys, and we're probably looking at three hundred thousand dollars for those.
Just want everybody to know, this is a lot of money. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know the last time we raised taxes, but sometimes you have to pay for what you get, I mean. Completion is gone, we really haven't raised our taxes, so.
Seven years.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chief Nelson or Administrator Vincent? Thank you very much. With that, we have reached item number eight, public comments. Any other comments on town services or business conducted, any public comments?
Melody Langley, they're fifteen-ten, they're going to try to sit quietly most of the time. You're getting me twice tonight. I'm really, really sorry that Chief Hoffman has already left the room, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that this is his last council meeting before his last day, and I just hope that it will go on record that we appreciate him so much, and I so wish that he was here to, to hear this. I hope that you guys will do something special, special for him on his last day, because he served this town well.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Richard Weaver, six-eighteen Cypress Drive, Surfside Beach. Couple of things, I don't know. The comment keeps getting made. The comment keeps getting made that the Horry County is going to pull the ambulance. Why can we not have our own ambulance? That's one thing. The second thing is, nobody wants taxes to go up. But neither do we want to pay $7 for a bag of Cheetos. But that's what's going on right now. If you're going to have progress, you're going to have to pay for it. It's easier said than done. A lot of people on fixed incomes don't have the extra money to do it. I don't know if there's a way that there could be a committee to figure out, hey, who's on this fixed income that is really going to cost them so much that they can't pay the taxes or they can't buy their medicine? That there'd be a foundation or something set up for it? To be able to have these people, and they're not seen in danger to lose them once they've been here all this time. So, but, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at. It's a, it's a big decision. It's a lot on our council. It might be too much for the council to bear all along. Public environment is so crucial. And I think that you're headed in the right direction. And I think that everyone deserves to be appreciated for what you do.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments? All right. Thank you very much for that. I'm going to now move on to item number nine, town council discussion and/or comments. And I'm going to start with Mr. Walls, right to my left. I'm only thinking first.
No. Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. And the number one thing, there's been a lot of sleepless nights. It was great to get that email from Jerry this morning that he was going to, that we're going to put forth every ounce of effort guys into trying to keep this fire department. We want to keep this fire department, but it has to be a good, solid financial decision for everyone. So I'm glad that at least we're going to dive deep and take it, and we've got some time to really take a good look at it before we make any critical decisions. So please, I'll reiterate what's been said up here by a number of people, but please, don't hesitate to let us know your thoughts. If you see us out walking, if you see, whatever, call me, send me an email, any of us, let us know your thoughts. We're trying to make a decision for y'all. I mean, it's, and we need to know how you feel. How hard do you want us to fight to save our fire department? Or is it in the best interest financially and safety-wise to have Horry County come in so that they can bring us to a level and maintain, you know, we're going to pay them or we're going to pay the town to do the same thing? But we need to know how you feel about it. I'm sorry. But yeah, thanks for everybody that listened in. Thanks for everybody that came out tonight. I appreciate you. And I'll hopefully see you at the workshop next Tuesday when we're really going to be looking hard at budget. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman.
Just want to thank everybody for coming out. The ambulance leaving, that's a big hit, it really is. And I was very, very surprised. Years ago, I was in the volunteer fire department. And we had ambulance, it's not one, we had several. I don't, I don't understand why they never did it here. Especially since we have such a lot of elderly people here. They get sick. I don't know if it's, we can afford to have an ambulance. Ambulance costs a lot of money. And then you need some people to man that ambulance. Used to be with the volunteers, we had people who would volunteer only for the ambulance. So I don't know if we could possibly do that. Something to look into. Because I really, really think losing an ambulance, even though it's going to be five, five minutes, you know, based five minutes away, when you're having a heart attack or something, that's a long time. But like the chief said, we're going to have EMTs. Hopefully get a couple more paramedics that'll be able to stabilize you at least. And then hopefully, the ambulance is nearby. It's going to cost a lot of money. It is. And we need to hear what you have to say. You know? Don't believe social media. If you did, if this was a done deal already, among other things. Social media doesn't tell you the truth. At the, at the budget meeting, hopefully some of you can get here and let us know how you feel. And tell us what you want us to cut, or what you want to spend on. The residents are people who are supposed to make the decisions here. I know you entrust us to represent you. But if we don't know what you want to do, we're just going to wing it here. You know, we're going to do the best decision that we can make. But we need you to tell us. If you can't make the meeting, email us, text us. Get the word out to your neighbors, start talking about this because it's going to affect each and every one of us. And again, thank you for coming out. Hope to see you on next Tuesday at 10 o'clock right here.
Mr. Stamey.
Let me start out by thanking everybody for coming. We thank our amazing staff for the work that CalGAS put in. And I also would like to thank, and he ain't here, but he will hear it, I'm sure. Thank Kenny Hoffman for the time that he's put in for this town. I'm going to echo the same thing that other two guys has told you in front of me. This is a very, very important thing to this town. If you, if you go, you want to talk about it, listen. I'll be willing to come to your house, tell your friends, tell everybody that you know that this is going on. We would love to know what you think. We're going to make a decision, and some people ain't going to like it. Some's going to love it and some ain't going to. I even had a long conversation this weekend with some of my friends. We were sitting at a table, and I tried to explain, we just can't go out and spend a tax money, an H tax money that we have coming into this town on fire. There are other things that need to be taken care of. We need police in the town right now. So that's more staff. So you just can't, you've got to think about this for the best of the town and how it's going to affect you. Tell the council. I've had some people say they don't want to come and speak in front of, to us because we ain't paying attention. But listen, the more you tell us, the more we're going to listen. More we're going to listen to what you're going to say. I don't want to make a decision, but I will. I will do it to the best of my ability. And I will make a decision what I think is best for this town. If it's raising your taxes 10 mils, that's what I will do. If it ain't, and it's better to turn it over to Horry County, that's what I'm going to do. And I hope everyone of you, it's here. Let us know what you think. Good night.
Mr. Krikow.
Well, I, everybody always thanks everyone for coming out. I'd like to challenge everyone to ring their neighbors next time or at least have them listen in and get involved. We really do have some decisions that are going to be tough. And we all would like your input. And with that, well, I guess also, I would like to urge everyone to come to our meeting next Tuesday for the budget. And I don't know if we're going to have any input at that time. Hopefully, we will, but I don't know if we will. Anyway, good night and see you next time.
Mr. Kinkin.
I also want to thank the people that are here and listening in. And especially want to thank Chief Hoffman for the years of service he's done. He's been an inspiration for this town. And I really appreciate, before he became chief, I never saw a car drive Dogwood Drive or 14th Avenue. And I see him every day. So he's made, he's gone from, made it community policing instead of what we had before. Someone mentioned online, there is so much misinformation. And I only see a little bit of it, but I hear it from my wife. And I read a Facebook post about 1% money that the fire department gets from insurance. Town has nothing to do with that. But they had all these grandiose ideas, like it was a lot of money. Yeah, it's $8, $10,000 a year, maybe even more than that. I'm not sure because it's, it doesn't belong to the town. It belongs to the firemen. They get to decide how to spend it. They don't even have to come, well, Chief Clemmons told us how he spent it, but he didn't have to. So don't believe everything you read online, please. Our keyboard warriors are going nuts. And I guess they just stay up night thinking up things to say. I don't know how they do it, but it's so much misinformation. I'm like the rest of it. I'm available. I'll come to your house. You could look up our phone numbers and our email addresses. Don't send me a text, send me an email. But we want to hear from you. We want to talk to you, tell you as much as we know. I was totally relieved tonight when I heard that we might be able to, this is a news flash, your taxes are going to go up. But maybe not as much as I thought they were going to go up because we can use some of tax increase and A tax. Last week or two weeks ago, I didn't think you'd do anything but tax increase for labor. So I'm already going to start to sleep better tonight, just knowing that. So, you know, it's, it is a big deal. Richard asked about the ambulance. That would require us buying an ambulance and adding six more people. I just don't think it's feasible. The county's always been responsible for it. They're going to be three miles away. But our first responders are going to have, be EMTs and can take care of you until the ambulance gets there. It would be nice if the county would leave the ambulance here. I asked them when they were here, would you consider leaving it here and adding another? Because this is the fourth busiest station. Well, if they've got that much activity, they need more ambulances. And they do. The county needs more ambulances. So they need to address that issue. With that said, I want to wish everybody a good week. Hope to see you next Tuesday. God bless you and town of Surfside Beach. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw.
Well, I want to say, start off by thanking everyone that's contacted me. Yes, the rumor mill is, social media is not your friend. But I do want to stress, people have stopped at my house because I'm always working in the yard. They have texted me, they have emailed me, they have messaged me through Facebook, and I do appreciate that. And I hear the same thing over and over from everyone. Some people tell me they don't want to fix the income. At the same time, they said, but if it stays in Surfside, we'll have the control. If we turn it over to Horry County, we're not going to have the control of taxes. So I like the good input that I'm hearing. And I'm hearing the same thing over and over from our residents. They want to keep the fire department here. So I'm up to, I think, 22 people contacting me, all those different ways that I mentioned. I would like triple that to contact me in the next week to get ready for this budget meeting. You can make us smarter to make the better decision. So please, reach out to any one of us. And we will work hard for you. I know I will. And I'm sure everybody on this council will work for you. Second of all, as far as the acting chief of police, because I saw everybody's looks when I voted no. I voted no because I don't know this in the fiddle. And I, in good conscience, I could not vote yes. Now, I will make a better effort to go see him and talk to him and meet with him. I just, to tell you the truth, I haven't had the time because I've been dealing with the fire department. So I wish you would have been here to be introduced. But I'll make an effort to go to the police department and introduce myself and get to know him. Every, you know, he has a resume. But once again, I want to know the person we're going to be working with for me to vote a yes or a no. With that said, I appreciate, like everyone up here does. But please, contact us before the workshop. Tell us how you feel about the fire department. And then come to the workshop if it's, if it's possible. Thank you.
All right. I'll wrap things up. I also want to thank everybody for coming, listening online. I'm pleased with what I've heard from this council. Open minds, we've had some good discussion. I think, you know, not too many preconceived notions. I think that bodes well for making a good, informed decision as we move ahead through the next coming months, heading into next year, whether we choose to stay with the fire department all the way through or eventually have to turn to Horry County. I also appreciate everybody who's reached out to me. I, the vast majority, I have no idea who they are. But, you know, I get the emails. Do not write to me on Facebook. I'm not going to answer anything on Facebook. I've got an account, but I read only. But you can call, you can text, you can email. And I have open office hours. And I just urge you to avail yourself to any of those avenues. And then, of course, come to these meetings. I know the all-day budget workshop is not, you know, the most fun event. It isn't for us either. But, you know, we've got to work through it. We heard the comment that, you know, that this is a burden for all of council, and it is. This is, it's not a fun part of the job. But it is for you as well. You're all part of this. And we need your inputs. We need to hear from you. It's a very difficult decision to go ahead because it's expensive one way or the other. So we'll leave it at that. And again, I'll just thank everybody for coming. And I am now going to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Mayor.
Mr. Stamey. I make a motion to adjourn in a few seconds. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Gary. Needing adjourn.
Don't go anywhere, we've got papers to sign.